Welcome to the Luna Holistic Podcast. I'm your host Geneva Robbins and every month on this podcast, we'll talk about Reiki as well as answering your questions on all things spiritual. We are gratefully located in Calgary in Treaty 7 Territory. Thank you all and welcome to the show. Hello and welcome to the Luna Holistic Podcast. My name's Geneva Robbins and today I have Kim Starr with me. Hi, Kim.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm great. Excited to be here.
Yeah, thank you for being here. You're helping me out today. Figure out what are these special sessions that we've got new to Luna Holistic? These are really powerful sessions that combine a guided sort of channeled meditation and a bit of Reiki to help you with multi-generational healing and past life stuff and manifesting and a whole pile of other things. So we're going to be talking about that today. So yeah, thanks, Kim.
I'm super excited. I've had a bunch of these sessions and they definitely are very special. So glad to be talking about them.
Yay. Thanks. Let's start as we always do with our little collective breath of gratitude. So you can gently close your eyes and just take a big sigh of relief. Letting everything flow into the earth. Letting anything you might be energetically holding, just gently get supported by that wise infinite intelligence within the planet. Just letting that energy help you with anything you might be pondering. That you might be trying to figure out. Just letting that wisdom guide you. Maybe even taking your hands off the wheel a little bit. And letting that divine energy steer you to the best outcome. Because really, we're all just passengers on this planet. And all that's required is just to send a deep sense of reverence and gratitude to the earth below you. To all the plants and animals that live in your area. To that fresh air and water that supports all of life. Letting that gratitude flow out from you and notice that infinite reverb, that echo back of gratitude flowing in to fill your heart. Bring a smile to your face, balance your energy field and anchor you into this moment. And when you're ready, you can open your eyes. Hmm. Thank you. How'd that go for you, Kim?
Oh, it works every time.
It's like magic.
It really is. Yeah. It's unbelievable how just a few minutes can just make such a difference.
But yeah. Nice little segue. If a few minutes could make a difference, what could two and a half hours do? Because that's what these special sessions are. They're whoppers, but it is worth every, every second of your time and energy. I feel. That's why I made them because I only offer what I think is going to be helpful to people. This is sort of an extension of work that I've been doing for it turns out a really long time. My team, so like the spiritual guidance that I work with when I do this work in Reiki. They're like, go look in your red journal and read it. Read what's on page 13, 14. I was like, okay, I'm like, I have a red journal. And so when I went and looked through it, it's from 2013. So as of this recording date, that's 11 years ago. And the whole journal is filled from the beginning to the end with basically the content of these special sessions. Lots of past life healing, some multi-generational things, talking with my past loved ones, with my spiritual team and mentors, and just asking them all kinds of questions, lots of manifesting. So I've been doing this myself for a really long time and I have been incorporating it into sessions with others as we do these Reiki sessions for quite a bit of time. So I thought instead of just waiting until people who know me ask me, I'm just going to make it easy for people to get access to this kind of support. And but you've done a couple of these sessions, Kim. Would you mind sharing your experience with?
Yeah, they all, all the ones that I have done have been incredibly powerful and transformative and really healing. So one of the things that seemed to happen particularly in the past life and the multi-generational healing sessions. One of the biggest takeaways for me was just seeing things from a compassionate lens, which was unexpected, to be honest. The, some of the stuff that was coming up for me was some pretty hard stuff, some pretty challenging life stuff that I've carried. And I just remember when I was doing these, both of these sessions, I just left with this like amazing sense of peace and just compassion, compassion for myself, compassion for all of my life experiences, compassion for my ancestors. So yeah, it was extremely transformative. I think they're, like you said, it kind of comes up just naturally in a Reiki session a lot of the time. So I think, I think it's really important to have a session that's just based on these things that people can come in for this purpose and have that extra time as well. Cause the time, it sounds like a lot. It's two and a half hours, but it actually goes by really fast. And the healing that happens is needed. And so I think the extra time is really, really important. But yeah, I, I think they're amazing. So yeah, I'm excited.
Yeah, it's, I mean, we're unpacking a lot with each one of these sessions and, and I don't want to rush anybody, right? Like there's a little bit of extra time built in so that if people have gone really deep, we've got the extra, you know, few minutes to like make sure everything is like settled and clear and grounded and everything like that. All of these sessions are sort of structured the same way. We chat for a little bit about where you're at and what you want to focus on. And then depending on which session you choose, there's a guided meditation where we, sort of like a guided meditation or regression style meditation where we guide you into basically this altered state. And then you say out loud whatever you're experiencing. And because we also sort of do it in this Reiki envelope, so we might do a little bit of Reiki beforehand and some Reiki after. I find Reiki is a very high vibration frequency and it helps people access a meditative state. And so there's basically we can give you a little bit of Reiki to help you ground and clear. And then basically guide you into this connected place where you can meet an ancestor, if it's a multi-generational healing. If it's a past loved one, meeting your loved one session, you can have a conversation with somebody that you love who's passed over. And we basically help facilitate that conversation and help with, there's a healing process where you can release any energies that you're holding on to that maybe don't belong to you in a really loving way. And then you can receive back all of the gifts. And, and then we come back out of this meditation and then we do a bit of a debrief with you so that you can like, share what you experienced in more detail. We're writing notes the whole time as you're, so we're kind of recording it as we go of what you've shared and then anything that we get as practitioners, because we're kind of going with you. So you get help to get guided into that meeting place and connection and, and then holding that sort of energetic space. And then we'll share anything that we get. So any impressions or messages or things like that that come in. We share all of that and then maybe do a bit of Reiki to close is also a big part of it. We've got a number of different sessions. So there's multi-generational healing session where you're meeting an ancestor and releasing any generational trauma and then receiving the generational gifts. And it's a really beautiful experience. Like you said, Kim, it's so compassionate. And we go fairly far back in time, but you can do it with anybody that's related to you. Or even if you're adopted, we've done this with people who have adopted families and, and genetic family trees. Because you, you inherit different pieces from, from the people who've raised you. So, um, so it's possible, even if you don't know your family, we can, you know, they, these, all these people had to exist in order for you to get here. So, so even if you don't know their names or you can't track it back all that far, that's totally fine. We just use, we'll just give that ancestor that resonates a nickname, something kind of loving. And then we just meet on the soul plane and lean into with curiosity of what's, what's happening there. And sort of helping you to make that connection and have that healing conversation. And it's really, really beautiful. I find it's often, we're handing back, yes, we're letting go of the pain and trauma, but it's like we're giving that person their missing puzzle piece to their healing. Cause if we're holding it, they can't heal it. You know, sometimes it's what we hand back to them is what they needed. Like what the healing they needed, you know, so for a family member who maybe lived in poverty and was starving, might hand them back a loaf of bread, right? Like food, you might give them money or love or, you know, a golden heart so that they would know that they're worthy and loved. And then you can receive all of their care and love and their pride that you are doing so well, you know? And, and look at you, you're not starving. That's amazing. That one I find is so beautiful. It's like, um, when I've done it, it feels like a hum that's been in the background has gone silent. So there's just like this tension that goes out of your body of, you know, your subconscious beliefs. It helps you repattern sort of thinking patterns or limiting beliefs that you might have inherited from family. I mean, it made sense for them because the world maybe was a dangerous, scary place for them, but it's, that doesn't need to keep being true for you now. So I find it's like a beautiful opportunity to like kind of release and, and heal. But yeah, what are your thoughts on the multi-generational one, Kim?
Yeah. You know what? I, I'm just thinking back to my session and that one of the most profound things I think that I felt was just that, like I had this like understanding of what I was holding, which I didn't anticipate. When I went into the session, I didn't anticipate kind of what was going to happen. Like I, I definitely felt like it was, it was very eye opening for me and it felt very divinely led. And it was just incredible. Some of the like, I came out with like a fresh set of eyes, I would say. And like a different understanding of, of some of the things that I had been holding and also why? Because we're kind of having these conversations with one of our ancestors and, and what is this energy all about? And so, yeah, it was very, it was, it was really insightful. And the other thing I was going to say is just in these sessions, it's like your highest self is really stepping forward because the answers that are coming through, when Geneva, you were guiding the meditations and asking some of the questions of what was happening or what, what I was seeing. It felt like the brain wasn't, I wasn't using the brain to think of an answer. It just was intuitively coming forth. And it felt very like the highest self was speaking through me. And so when I have looked back at my notes that you provided for me after my session, it was almost like, wow, these are, these are like answers. Like I, my highest self was speaking that day to me. And now I can look back and see all of the tools and all of the guidance. And yeah, so it's just, it's pretty, it's just so profound.
Yeah. Yeah. I love it. I think it's amazing. And yeah, and we're all holding trauma. Some people more than others. Don't worry. It doesn't matter the level of, you know, hardship that people have experienced. You can, even if you just let a little piece of it go, it doesn't even have to be all of it, but you can let it all go. I encourage you to let it all go and, and be free. But yeah, it's, it's sometimes surprising how much we are carrying. Everybody's just trying to do their best, right? And, and trying to get by and, and trying to figure things out with not all of the tools and resources or emotional support or hair that they needed. And so I think being able to go in and be really, really gentle with, you know, those experiences, I think is, is very healing all on its own. I feel like it's very massively transformative for me for sure. You know, it's funny, I've needed the multi-generational healings in order to get the multi-generational healing sessions out into the world. Cause I have a lot of like, of a lot of people in my family who have dodged the law. When you go back and, well, not dodged at all. I've got, there's a lot of family members who either like were starved to death or were London poor and ended up in jail and all of these sorts of things. So letting go of that, like, don't be seen or you'll get caught or you'll get hurt or you'll get injured. Or like, don't, don't stick your neck out or you'll get cut off. That kind of energy has been a big one that sort of limited a lot of my personal growth and getting my work out into the world. So that's been really helpful to clear on that level. And then I also feel like it's got a tie to past life stuff because we choose our present families and we know our lineage based on, you know, what, but healing they can provide, what lessons they can give us. And we choose that based on other lives we've had. And so that, and that's really where I have started. A lot of my healing journeys, I would get these sort of past life memories just popping into my head. And I'm like, where did that come from? Like, that's not it. And it's a real memory as though I've lived it. It's all multisensory. And, and so I went on at the beginning of my spiritual voyage. I, I, in this lifetime, I spent quite a bit of time researching and understanding past lives because I wanted to put this energy in context. And, and I also felt like I didn't want to get stuck with just the trauma of the past life. But that if I've had all of these lives, then I have all of this knowledge and wisdom too and skills. And I can bring those skills forward. And if I can remember, you know, all of these, all of these things that I would have learned in other lifetimes, then it will make it easier for me now. So that's where I started the past life wisdom meditation. And where you can go back and into a lifetime where you knew a lot of stuff about something that you're going through right now. And you get guided back to sort of connect to a past version of you in any lifetime that's relevant to where you are now. And that one I find is so cool because it's very deeply healing. You can see where you've maybe made choices or decisions that have kept you maybe stuck. And then you can choose to change those decisions that you made in that life. And kind of, I find past life healing is really good if you feel like you're in a, in a karmic loop. You know, it's just the same thing over and over. You're in the same kind of job, even though you've switched jobs five times. Or you're in the same kind of relationship, even though you've switched, you know, different partners all of the time, but it's not, nothing's really getting you moving forward, you know? My past life healing is really great for getting you out of any pattern that you seem to be stuck in and into that new space. And oh yeah, I find it all links together really beautifully because, you know, our souls are here on this voyage in these human bodies for a very limited time, but our souls are eternal. So we've had all of these different personalities, but one energy that connects all of them. And so we kind of travel through the now moment. So the present moment is the moment that unites all of our experience. So in the meditation, we sort of travel into this infinite now moment. And then it's almost like going into a room with an infinite number of doors. And then you can just walk through the doorway that is connected to a life that has healing and meaning for you for this life now. So I find it's very well protected and guided and it's very purposeful, purpose driven. So yeah, I find these, these past life sessions are really, really powerful. For me, they've been instrumental in clearing out lots of fears that don't make any sense to me of why I'm like so incredibly like mortally terrified to do any form of public speaking or I used to be, right? And so as I did a bunch of past life healing, it's made it possible for me to have a life where I talk to people all day long. And I'm really, really comfortable in, in all sizes of groups. It actually is my most favorite thing to do. The bigger the crowd, the better is to talk to people about this stuff. And that definitely wasn't the case at the beginning of my life. If you had told the, you know, my 15 year old self, you're going to be speaking in front of people for a living and teaching them about things that aren't part of the norm. I would have thought, no, I'm not, I'm, I'm not going to do that. You don't know me. That's ridiculous. I'm going to have a nice little safe desk job where I just work on spreadsheets and do math and that's it. It's going to be nice and safe and nobody's ever going to see me. And that didn't happen, obviously. Because, because as I healed, I found that I didn't need to hide anymore. So all of the fears of persecution, all of the fears of like the dangerousness of speaking up and being seen, all of that started fading and pretty, pretty quickly too. I find it just starts dissolving. Like a, an echo or a, you know, it's part of you, but it's not stopping you because it's healed. But how about you, Kim? How, you've had a past life session. How did that go for you?
It was, it was massive. Um, it's so interesting because I remember like looking back at that experience. When we did this a while ago, I remember being a little bit nervous because I, I am totally comfortable with other people's past life stuff. But prior to this, I wasn't doing a lot of work with my own past life stuff. And so, so I did feel, I remember feeling a little bit nervous and uncertain and like, is this something that like, is going to be okay for me? Or is this something that I'm interested in working with? And, and it was incredible. It was like, the experience was just so amazing. I didn't know if I was going to be able to connect because previously I hadn't seen a lot of past life stuff. And so this actually also helped kind of for me, it was like a teaching tool because it was like the, oh, this is how I can bring this back for myself. I can kind of go through this process. So I can reconnect to different past lives, right? So the session actually opened up this massive, amazing world for me, this, this very, very beautiful world of healing. But I remember in my session, so how it kind of started and like you said, we create this like, the Reiki just creates this beautiful space, right? Where we're, we just start to like sink in and we can help other people start to sink into that same, same space and time and energy. And I remember all of a sudden, out of nowhere, I started flipping pages in this massive book. And I was like, what am I looking at? Cause I was looking at all these different pictures of kind of scenarios and, and different people. And I was like, oh my goodness, I'm looking through the, like my past lives. I'm flipping through this like story. And, and so when we had started the session, I remember we were talking about like, what is it that's coming up for you? Like, what would you like to work on? And we chose something to work on. And so as soon as this one page just stopped and it was like, that's the one, that's the life that holds this. This is where it all started. So, so that was to me, that was incredible. We did like, we had a massive session. We did a lot of healing work. Again, just like, I felt like it was so, I had like so much understanding and so much insight. And then the, the most incredible thing was the Reiki also after. Because what I saw on the Reiki table, so, so you were just kind of integrating everything for me. And I had this vision of all those lives that I had seen in that book being healed. Because we did that one session and it was connected to all of those lives that I had been previously looking at. So yeah, it was epic for me. Obviously you can tell I'm pretty excited about it, but I think that, um, so like, I guess even if you, even if someone is a little bit nervous, like I'm a Reiki master and I was a little bit nervous. And, and it just was so beautiful and powerful and, and it's definitely worth exploring and just, just being curious and giving it a try. So yeah.
Yeah. And it's, and I find too, it's like, I do everything, all the work that I do, that all the work that we do here at Luna Holistic is all about what moves you forward, what's going to, what's going to help you heal and clear anything that is holding back your light. And the, the end goal is so that you are feeling radiant and fulfilled. And there's more space for you to be you in your life. And all of these sessions are just different pathways of getting there. So if you find there's a part of you that's like sticking or you're kind of like shrinking back in one area of your life and it doesn't quite make logical sense. Sometimes there's a deeper spiritual meaning in behind it and it can be really, you know, and it can be really illuminating. And, and for me, I kind of lean into the weirdness of all of it. You know, I do have a science background. So I'm like, well, maybe I'm just all making it all up. And these are just like fancy little stories that, you know, my brain has concocted much the way it dreams, you know? And these are just wild imaginings and it's not actually connected to anything real. It's just some weird little neuron pathways firing in my brain, you know, that, that could be it. But, um, and that even if you are making it all up, that's okay if it gets you to someplace new. And it is healing and helpful and clearing. And it's, you know, maybe it's all just a wild metaphor for what's actually happening in your present life and a way. Um, and a way to put things in your present life in context and sort of i- in some ways like heal and close chapters. And I kind of feel like either can be true. And um, but for me, I just kind of go in with curiosity. I lean into the images, even if they feel strange and weird, or it doesn't make sense that I, that would be me. I just sort of go, well, let's just, let's just ponder it and then we can, we can put it all in context later. And you can keep the, and that's why we, I leave quite a bit of time for just to discuss where you went. And, and then also, you know, ask your, your internal knowing, your deep knowing, like what healing needs to happen here? And what do you need in terms of self-care to integrate this information and all of that? But I find, um, you know, like the, I mean, that's, that's the skeptic point of view. But I feel like there's just so much um, quantum weirdness in my own experiences with past lives that I can't even, you know, I, it just, it was just so many strange little coincidences and things like that that have me completely, I'm, I'm completely on board. I, I feel like we get more than one life to, there's so many lessons to learn. Earth is really hard. So, and we live in a kind and loving universe. So we're going to be given more than one chance to learn all of the lessons we need to learn and to experience everything we need to experience. This human life is very precious and there are things that we can only learn and heal while we're here in human bodies. Because when we're on the other side, everything's fine, peachy. And it doesn't make sense that you could ever feel lost, lonely, confused and disconnected because you're part of the all that is. And so part of why we incarnate here, I feel like is to learn and grow and understand. And in a lot of ways, I feel like it's to deepen our understanding of compassion and love and connection. Because so much of our human journey is to create and live and be in that state of connection awe and wonder, even though there's so many forces that are the opposite of that. There's a lot of, like, we, here we are in these discreet, disconnected human bodies. And so there can be this sort of feeling of like spiritual homesickness that people can have. And how do you get over that feeling of wanting to be connected to everything? Will you start making art and music and writing and having experiences with other people? Sharing what you feel with other people so that, and they share what they're feeling and experiencing with you? And trying to understand what's happening for another person or another being? All of those sort of create this rich beauty of our human experience. And anytime you heal a trauma, doesn't matter when or where it happened, what you're left with is the gifts, the strengths, the resilience. And, and so as you heal, any past life that had ended traumatically or was traumatic for the middle. Um, sometimes it's an honor death that's traumatic. It's the whole like life part. That's true, the trauma. And so when you heal that trauma, what you're left with is the strength and the, the resilience. And those are qualities that you can then bring into your, your life. And you can boost up the, those skills in a really beautiful, beautiful way. So that's the past life one. It helps you kind of switch tracks and get into a new frame of mind. So yeah, that's all we have time for this podcast. But stay tuned to next podcast because we're going to continue talking about special sessions because they are super special and we have so many of them. And maybe by the time you're catching part two, there's gonna be even more special sessions on the Lunar Holistic website. So check that out. If you have any questions about any of this stuff, please let us know. And until next time, bye bye. Thank you for joining us on the Lunar Holistic Podcast. We're so grateful that you are here. If you've got a question, we'd love to hear from you. Go to lunaholistic.com/podcast and we'll answer you in an upcoming episode. Be sure to subscribe to our show on Apple Podcasts or Spotify. And also please rate, cause you never know where your little five stars will go to shine light into somebody's heart today. So thank you very much and we'll see you next time.